Welcome to the, to the meeting this evening. Okay, all right. Just gonna let that play out for a second. Anybody have to leave and come back? Okay, we'll wait for you. So, um, we have five, uh, public hearings scheduled before we open up the council meeting. Uh, sometimes they go quick, sometimes they don't, but either way, I do have some, uh, speakers who filled out, uh, forms to speak on some of the public hearing ordinances. So what we'll do is I'll take it one by one, and, uh, we're gonna start off with ordinance number eleven fifty-one. This ordinance had a first reading at the last city council meeting. Ordinance eleven fifty-one is an ordinance by the mayor and city council of Havertagh Grace pursuant to the authority of the Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article, the annotated code of Maryland, and sections thirty-three and thirty-four of the Havertagh Grace City Charter for the purpose of repealing and replacing Havertagh Grace City Code, Chapter thirty-one, Building Construction. And this is ordinance eleven fifty-one, and I believe I have people who want to speak. Uh, Ms. Carrie Parsons. Good evening and welcome, Mrs. Parsons. May we please have your name and address for the record.
Good evening, uh, council, mayor, citizens at home, Carrie Parsons on Otsego Street, here in Havertagh Grace. So, I do have a couple of questions. One, it's council member, uh, Sinega's phenomenal. You get, you and, uh, Mr. Tim did a phenomenal job. I greatly appreciate it. I think it's gonna, um, especially when we start getting into other areas of being able to enforce, um, homes that are already built, uh, in what, uh, in not looking really terrible, uh, you'll be able to at least start enforcing it. But I do have one question, and that is on line two-nine-four, section Y, section three-zero-two-dot-four, weeds. Um, a little further down on, into line two-nine-five, it says, "Trees and shrubs located on private property shall not create a nuisance, shall not create a safety hazard to, shall not impose on public safety or interfere with any structure on the subject premise or adjoining properties or public utilities." Do we know it, can we kind of define what the nuisance is? Cause I've looked it up in Oxford, but I'm a little concerned because, say I have a lilac bush, and my neighbor is allergic to bees, doesn't like the smell, it's right along the property line, would that be considered a nuisance? So I'm just a little concerned about where we state that it's creating a nuisance.
I mean, if anybody wants to comment on it. You can, if you want.
Ms. Parsons, thank you for asking the question. A nuisance would be something that would cause, uh, a public safety. Let's say, for instance, it's growing out where you can't see the traffic coming by, um, line of sight is missing, or it's, um, into the sidewalk where it's, um, causing people to trip, or an issue in that respect. So basically, keeping the, keeping it looking nice and safe for the community.
So even, and I'm hypothesizing here, because we do have individuals with bee allergies, and even though we have the, um, beautiful area over by Todd Park, um, there's a couple of native trees that, well, the bees are just really attracted. Would, could that be considered on a private property, a nuisance if, you know, because the way it's attracting the bees or anything? Cause that would be considered a public safety then?
Well, I would say in a public, uh, or in a private home, um, people might have pollinator gardens, or have a plant that will attract bees, but they're not going to be housed there. They'll move on to do their pollinating. So, um, I think that, um, people that do have bee allergies have their Epi-Pins available or et cetera, to make sure that they're safe. But I really think if someone's going to, um, create a bee colony, it's not going to be in their private home.
Okay. Thank you so kindly.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons. We have another, um, citizen signed up to speak on, uh, eleven fifty, ordinance eleven fifty-one, Kirk Smith. Welcome, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, mayor, city council, people at home, administration. My name is Kirk Smith, Otsego Street. I'm a wannabe beekeeper. I speak for the trees, and I'm concerned. I grow a lot of trees. You've all been invited to come see him. None of you have really taken it up, besides General Taylor and his husband, who I think really enjoyed the garden tour. It was a fantastic success. Um, I'm gonna follow up with what Ms. Parsons talked about. We work very hard, this city, Ms. Ishack, our attorney Ishack, her husband Paul, the Honorable Paul Ishack, this mayor, this, a majority of this council, well, at least half, to make sure that we could have bee aperraries in municipalities, not just here in Havertagh Grace and Hartford County, but all over the state of Maryland, by getting bees reclassified as not livestock. We did that. The city of Havertagh Grace, the citizens, our elected officials, did that. So, I'm gonna keep going with this nuisance. I think it needs to be more defined. Nowhere in this section, um, from two-nine-four down, does it say a danger. And that's what you were describing. Line of sight is a danger. And the military having a line of sight on somebody, especially if you got a periscope reticle on them, that's a targeting solution. When you're driving, line of sight means you can't see. That's danger. It's not a nuisance. Okay, that's public safety. I don't think nuisance is the word that we should use when we're coming up with code. I think it's not as well-defined, and what one person considers a nuisance, others do not. I frankly don't like the fact that we don't plant enough fruit trees, but that's a nuisance to me. I know this. I've talked about it with my tree commission liaison, council member Boyer, and she is not against doing it at certain locations, but she doesn't think we should tree-scape with fruit trees, and I kind of agree with her. And I think the general perception is, is that, uh, the public doesn't know that this, we're growing this fruit for them. They can eat it. So, it goes to waste. It falls down on our sidewalks and our public spaces, it becomes a slip-happened or a trip-hazard, and then DPW is responsible for keeping it cleaned up. I get her point. That's a nuisance. But what I'm growing in my backyard, or what other people here are growing in their backyard, what council president Rink Sacker is growing in his backyard, which we're gonna make better, is not a nuisance, okay? And that's what we're legislating, is private tree growth. As a city tree commissioner, one of the jobs tasked to me, or assigned to me, and the other tree commissioners, is to help promote and calculate what our tree canopy is here in the city of Havertagh Grace. Our goal is to be at forty percent by 2040. We can't do that on just public lands. It has to be private citizens engaging with the tree commission, planting the right tree at the right time and the right place. So it doesn't interfere, correct, with regulated utilities and possibly damaging structures. Which goes on to another point. If you're a homeowner, even if your place is paid off, and it's recommended, you should probably have home insurance. Home insurance will cover tree damage for a storm and storm damage. So I'm not even sure we can go that route, where it's a danger to their homes or their structures. Anyways, I, I don't need a lot of comments, I just kind of wanted to follow up on what was said about bee aperraries, and, uh, my thoughts on, uh, trees, and maybe we shouldn't be, we should look harder at that wording. I do like the public safety and the danger portion, but it doesn't really say the word danger in there. It just says a nuisance, and I don't, with everybody, I don't want to second-guess this one. I want to get it right, because, uh, I'm Kirk, I speak for the trees. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. That is the, uh, all the pre-filled out forms I had for public hearing on ordinance eleven fifty-one. Is there anyone in the audience this evening, uh, who also would like to speak on ordinance eleven fifty-one? Please raise your hand, be recognized. Any comments from the council on eleven fifty-one? Council president.
Mr. Mayor, um, because of the timeline that we need to pass this bill, uh, this ordinance, I will make a motion, uh, under the reading, uh, later, uh, to suspend the rules, uh, to vote on it tonight, uh, the same night as the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, council president. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Uh, without any further questions or comments, I now close public hearing on ordinance eleven fifty-one, the time is seven thirteen. We go to public hearing on ordinance eleven fifty-two. Ordinance eleven fifty-two, an ordinance concerning adoption tax rates for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, an ordinance by the mayor and city council of Havertagh Grace, Maryland pursuant to the authority provided by the annotated code of Maryland, tax property Article Title Six, and the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland, fixing the tax rate for fiscal year July one, two thousand twenty-four to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, on each one hundred dollars of assessable real property, personal property, and providing an additional special tax levied within the critical area, special taxing district, and setting the service charge for the semi-annual property tax payment option. This is ordinance eleven fifty-two. Is anyone in the audience here this evening to speak on eleven fifty-two? Mr. Smith, as you raise your hand. Welcome back to ordinance eleven fifty-two.
Thank you, mayor, again. My name is Kirk Smith, Otsego Street, Havertagh Grace, Maryland, two-one-zero-seven-eight. Um, I have a question. We've kept the tax rate the same. Thank you. But, I was reading some articles, I was just pursuing through this at night, because sometimes it's hard to get to sleep, and it seems like, I seem to remember that the recommendation for our municipality was that the tax rate go down. So then I did some checking, and I seen another news article where then council member Martin was, uh, I think, I think, no, it, he may have been mayor Martin, as a matter of fact, I'm getting some articles confused, but, uh, you only get it a couple of days, and it was a busy weekend, I apologize. But, uh, I think, uh, the difference between what the state recommended for the city was it ended up being a total of like a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, which is not great, but at least it's a little extra something to help out. What was the state recommendation for this year? I guess that's my question. Did I go to finance, maybe?
It was, uh, fifty-five and twenty-two.
It was, uh, fifty-five, and I believe twenty-two one-hundredths of a percent.
And it was-
Versus the five-six-five that it is currently now, and will stay.
I think it was recommended to be five-five-point-six last year? So it's gone down again?
Uh, it has gone down again. The constant yield which you're referring to is a program that they actually are, um, they legislated away from this past legislative session. It was basically said that you, despite any growth in the city, we should operate with a flat property tax dollar revenue. And they calculate what that will be, because they have all the land records. So, whatever that rate turned out to be, if it was anything above that, you're considered, that you're to treat it as if it's a tax increase under the old rules, but that has changed for this fiscal year. And now they've changed it to say if the rate itself is, uh, the same, then you're, you're keeping the rate flat, and you're up in line.
That's why we got to cancel that one hearing, isn't it?
That's correct.
Thank you. That makes a lot more sense now.
No longer required.
Cause, yeah, I was like- Because, yeah, I was like, oh. Oh, anyways, thank you so much. I just wanted some clarification on that because it's hard to find those documents as just a citizen. It's...
Well, I think one of the biggest problems...
Must be in there deep.
One of the biggest problems used to confuse people very often because we would always have to put in the newspaper a notice of a tax increase. And people thought we were raising taxes. But what it actually meant, and the state mandated a wording, what it actually meant was we're receiving, we're going to receive more tax revenue next year, even though the rate is the same. And the General Assembly removed that requirement at the last, at the last session. So just, it just, so we weren't required. That's a meeting got canceled. We're not changing the tax rate. So it's no longer required.
But that's still good for us, though, right? We're still going to, yeah, well, that's still good for us as a city, right? Okay. That's it. I was just, I was just wondering. And if I'm wondering, there's probably even smarter people who are wondering. I'm saying I'm the smartest by far. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We're still on the public hearing for ordinance 1152 concerning establishing a tax rate for 2025. Any other citizens wish to speak? Any comments from the council? Okay. Without any further comments from citizens or council, I now close public hearing on ordinance 1152. The time is 7:18. We're going to go to public hearing on ordinance 1153. 1153, concerning establishing water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2025, an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havre de Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Sections 33 and 34, of the Havre de Grace City Charter, City Code Chapter 196 and Exhibit A thereto, establishing the city water and sewer rates and service precipitation fees for the users of the city water and sewer system. I don't have any forms for 1154. So is any member of the audience here this evening here to speak on ordinance 1154? Comments from council? Okay, without any further comments, I now close public comment on ordinance 1150... I'm sorry, 1153. That's ordinance 1153. Now close public comment ordinance 1153. The time is 7:19. Now we're going to go to 1154. Ordinance 1154, public comment. Opening up right now, concerning changing the traffic pattern on Congress Avenue, an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havre de Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havre de Grace City Charter, to change the traffic pattern on Congress Avenue. And I have... Ms. Parsons. Welcome back, Ms. Parsons.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Council, citizens at home. Carrie Parsons at Segow Street. Councilmember Boyer.
Thank you. I did read everything. We walked it. We drove it. It, I didn't quite see it in the original plan. I saw a footnote about possibly changing that street. Couple of the things that I'm, I'm just a little curious because we had the map. Do we know approximately how many parking spaces we will increase?
So, just so everybody's following along, in the packet for tonight, there's a map at the back of it. And the map is a description showing the direction of the parking and how many parking spots. So the total spots along Congress will be seventy-four spots, which will be an increase of twenty-four new spots, which will be pull-in spots.
Wow. That is great. Thank you. Now this, I'm assuming...
If I may, the other great thing about this is all of this work that we'll be doing, there's going to be some additional work that, which will require handicapped access, which will be a couple of curb cuts, but for the most part, this is paint. So if it doesn't work, we can revert back without too much of an expense.
That was going to be my next question, is if we found a little bit later down, if we would be able to revert back. Especially as, you know, as we're getting into the summer. We know that the construction just started on Washington. We have Amtrak coming in, you know, especially, and we're going to be dealing with some, some challenges there. But I really was curious as to how many additional parking spots. Now, this does, it looks like it also is going to be... I saw a couple of others regarding possible changes, but that was, those again were footnotes, I assume, as they get further along in the downtown plan, that those will also be addressed.
You mean other streets making one way?
Yeah, not, not making them one-way, but changing of the parking, the angled parking.
So I believe in the overall plan for downtown, and I'm going to carefully say this and wait for people to nod as I go along. So the planning for the downtown, because of how we have to add space for the sidewalks, as well as the tree plantings, we, we need additional space, which will make it so that some of the pull-in parking that we currently have will go away and it will need to be parallel parking.
That's right. That's great. So thank you very much. I am, I can't wait to see the, the additional parking coming into the area.
I think it'll be beneficial to the churches especially and the farmer's market. So, thank you.
So thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons. We are still on public hearing for ordinance 1154. Any other members of the audience wish to speak on ordinance 1154? Any further comments from council? Okay, without any further comments, I now close public hearing on ordinance 1154. The time is now 7:24. Our last public hearing will be on ordinance 1155, 1155. An ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havre de Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havre de Grace City Charter, to change the traffic pattern on Lewis Street. And I do have... Okay, I have a couple of forms on that. We'll start with Sherri Ramsey. Good evening, Ms. Ramsey. Welcome. May we please have your name and address for record?
Sure. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Sherri Ramsey, 560 Lewis Street.
Thank you.
I'm here today to speak against the ordinance 1155, which is reversing ordinance 523. I can only speak for the portion of South, from South Stokes Street to Union Avenue, as I'm not familiar with the remaining portion that plans to be turned back into a two-way. I'm not sure what studies were done or if research was conducted as to what the impact of reversing the old ordinance would be to the current residents. The section of the road between South Stokes and Union is unique in that a small portion is very residential. However, the remaining portion is commercial. I think that the small portion is forgotten that we are residential because we are in a predominantly commercial road. So not only do, if we turn it in two ways, not only will we have the increased traffic, I believe that safety would be an issue just for that portion. Since there has been an increase of homes being built, you know, houses have been expanded. It's only eight, but it's still the residential section. As a resident and homeowner on the street, I ask that more consideration be given to the impact that this will have on residents. And if the, that you do decide to move forward to make it a two-way, I would request that speed pumps, bumps be installed on the residential side between South Stokes and South Freedom Lane, as well as cautionary signs for speed, for speeding and children at play. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. I'd like to call up Diane Williams and Michael Warfield. Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Yeah. I'm Diane Williams. Oops.
Your address.
Oh, we, we own the property and are soon-to-be residents at 565 Lewis Street.
And Mike Warfield, 565 Lewis Street. We're near the neighborhood. We haven't moved into our new home yet. It's under construction. One of the things that appealed to, oh, you wanted to ask a question. One of the things that appealed to us about this section of the street is that it is one-way.
I move into the city and I start breaking everything.
That's right. You're off the hook now.
Being a one-way street, I just feel it's inherently safer. The travel lane in a one-lane street is much wider than two travel lanes if you turn it into a two-way street. That section of Stokes between, excuse me, of Lewis between Stokes and, is that Union, is more narrow than the section of Lewis Street between Stokes and Adams, by a few feet. So that's to be considered also. But that's mainly my concern. It's less safe. And it's safer to have a one-way street, traffic coming from one direction. Also, there are businesses there. And we've seen large tractor-trailers come down that street. I'm envisioning two large tractor-trailers maneuvering towards each other on our narrow street. And that's of a concern also. So we personally would like to see it stay a one-way street.
Yeah, I concur with everything my husband just said. I did have a question. I didn't know we could ask questions tonight. So if I may, I was just curious as to why that, that... Was there a concern or a reason for reverting it back to a two-way street after all this time, when it's comfortably been a one-way street? And I know that that was initiated because of the needs of the hospital. But it's sort of like, we're all used to it now. So why turn it around if it, if it's not of necessity to do so? So I was just curious to know why, you know, the ordinance was even brought forth.
So brought the ordinance forth because of the hospital leaving and the street was made one-way for the hospital to make sure that there was an entrance for the, for the ambulances in case something happened at Revolution and Union. Also, at that time, there was a lot of parking occurring all around the neighborhoods. And there was people parking and walking to the hospital. At that time, the hospital was used a lot more. So reversing it because the hospital has gone back is returning our city back to the way we had it to begin with. It also allows for a, a more natural flow of traffic throughout the area. And, you know, quite honestly, in that area, there really isn't a lot of, or, I mean, phrase. Since the hospital has left, the amount of traffic going through the neighborhood in that whole area has reduced significantly. And I believe also the church that used to be on that street as well, that has also gone. So the impact on that street is much less than it was in the beginning.
Is there any, I don't know, is there any benefit for it to be one-way versus two-way in future development of that land?
We'll have to address that, I would assume, when the hospital gets sold to a developer and address it as, as we get, move forward that way to see how they want to develop it. But returning our, our streets back to the more natural flow for traffic is important for us to, in my opinion, important for us to do at this time. Again, if there is a problem, everything, you know, this is changeable as well. So when there is development on that property, if there is a need to make changes on that street or any other street in that area, we'll have to address that at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks for hearing us out.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much for speaking. Okay. Any other comments from the audience on ordinance 1155? Yes, sir. Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for record, sir?
Hello, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Rick Day. I live at 559 Lewis Street.
Welcome, sir.
So I want to support what my neighbors have said, and specifically from the 500 block of Lewis Street. Now, the non-random pattern that we see when we're seeing most of our congestion is when we have a funeral, God rest their soul, and garbage trucks coming in for that healthcare business that's there. And also what used to be the patient-first. That was congested a lot in that time. So when that happens, you have no room to go two ways. You only have room to go one way. So what you see is a lot of cars stopped at the end, waiting on other cars. That's what we predict you will see. So I wanted to support them and stress that we would like to keep it one-way. It seems to be safer for the children. And that's my opinion.
Thank you very much for speaking, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishes to speak on that ordinance 1155? Good evening and welcome, sir. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Good evening. My name is Randy Barnes. I'm the owner of the property at 566 Lewis Street. And also a member of Mount Zion Baptist Church. Comment was made, what is the, you know, I really didn't get a clear picture of the reason why, you know, traffic, the hospital's no longer there. What about future opportunities for businesses coming into that community? Are we not going to allow that situation? And when you talk about traffic coming back and forth, as the resident said, it's very narrow there. So I, I have a major concern. It's been like that as long as I've been living in Havre de Grace, and I'm 60 years old. So, and it hasn't been a problem. So why convert it back? Or if it was prior to the hospital, been there, that's many years. I just want to find out why, the real reason why. And what's the impact is that going to have on the church if another church comes back in to that location at 520 Lewis Street?
I don't know what to say other than what I just said. So the hospital's left, so we're returning, would like to return the streets back to the normal flow of traffic. Normal flow of traffic is two-way unless there is some major obstruction issue. I don't really know what you want to get out of the question from me other than what I've already answered.
Well, one thing that I want to get out of it, what is, I mean, what is the purpose? You tell me as far as the flow...
The purpose is to return traffic back to the natural flow of two-way traffic throughout, when it's just one street for one block that is not a natural flow of traffic within a city.
Okay. So you're saying back to natural. So when was it at two-way in your study? When, when was that done?
So the traffic pattern was changed, according to the information here, in 1963.
Okay. That's about the year I was born then. That's, that's right. Thanks for that information. The other question I have is are going to be parking on both sides of the street allowed? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on ordinance 1155? Any further comments from council?
You know, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. So it seems like there's quite a bit of concern over this, over this ordinance, right? So, and, and I can tell you right now, you know, I live in the area as well. And I don't know if that street is more narrow on the northern side of Union or if it's wider on the southern side from Union to Washington. But it's worth consideration, another look into this ordinance.
Any other further comments? Council President?
We will be having a work session on 1154. Maybe we can add 1155 at the same time.
Sure. Not a problem.
We'll have a public work session. We could discuss that.
I appreciate that, CP. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, without any further comments from the public or the council, I now close public hearing on ordinance 1155. The time is 7:37. Okay. Without any further comments from the public or the council, I now close public hearing on ordinance eleven fifty-five. The time is seven thirty-seven. Everybody ready for a council meeting? Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The date is May twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. I call to order a meeting of the Havant Grace Mayor City Council. I will now call the roll. Council President Ringsucker.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Boyer.
Here.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Here.
Councilmember Booger.
Here.
All council members are present and accounted for. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance opening prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
If I could kindly ask everyone to please remain standing as it's always a pleasure to welcome forward Reverend Gene Proud of the Proud Evangelistic Association. Give us the open prayer for his need. Welcome, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Let's pray. Father bless this council. Give them wisdom, knowledge, and patience so that everything will be done decently and in order and for the safety of the people. But also bless the MS people who are here. Give them wisdom and knowledge and courage and strength to get through their very trying jobs. Amen.
Reverend Gene, thank you so much. Please be seated. We're going to go to item number four. I'm sorry, item number five, approval of the minutes. City Council meeting minutes, May sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Council, I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by the Council President, second by Councilmember Booger. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, say nay. Motion to approve the City Council meeting minutes of May sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Approved, six zero, an affirmative. We will now go to item number six, comments from citizens. If you're here this evening to speak on agenda items or city business in general, now's the time to do so. I do have one remaining filled out, pre-filled out form, and that is Mr. Lee Parsons. I'm sorry, Mrs. Lee Parsons. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mrs. Parsons. Good evening.
My name is Lee Parsons. I live at three hundred Commerce Street, Unit four six, the Bayou here in town.
Welcome to the City Council meeting.
Thank you. I had, saw that there may be some new requirements for dumpsters. And I just wanted to note that we pay taxes at the same rate as everyone else in the city, but we don't get the same services because the city doesn't provide trash pickup for us. So we have to contract with a private contractor and that costs us over seven thousand dollars a year on top of the fact that we're paying taxes. Really doesn't seem fair because we're a residence, not a business. And then for the city to ask us to do other requirements as far as what our dumpster looks like, what the surrounding looks like, that's going to cost us additional fees. You know, unless the city wants to start picking up our trash and including us with the taxes that we already pay, I really think that would be unfair to ask us to come out and have to pay additional expenses. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Parsons, thank you. Council President, comment?
Mrs. Parsons, if I may, so previously, what, what we're doing with this ordinance, we're adopting the International Building Code. And that requires the shielding and the fencing around the trashcans. Previously, when we adopted it, we removed that requirement. And tonight, when we're adopting the new international building stand, standards, Councilmember Shenegas will be introducing an amendment to remove that again from the requirements for trash. Okay.
Thank you, Council President. Okay, that's the only other pre-filled out form I have. So now I will open the floor to any citizen who wishes to speak on an agenda item or any business of the city. Sir. Welcome. May we please have your name and address?
My name's Herbert Trussler of Strawberry. I want to congratulate everybody for getting reelected and want to talk about one of the ordinance. I hope the City Council reappoints my good friend Chris Ritchie back to the Director of Administration because this guy works his butt off. He took time out of his busy schedule to give me a call back. I had to tell him my good news that I got, um, I'm going to be stuck around for Havant Grace for one more year because I got to, they lowered my housing voucher. And if it wasn't for Chris taking some time out of his busy schedule, I don't know what I'd be doing. And the other question I got, when are we going to be bringing some good entertainment to Havant Grace at the new Star Center? Like some, like rock and roll stars and other people. There's one group I want to see us try to get back is the, um, the Opert Boys that were here for the fortieth. I can see if we can try to get them back because this is their annual, this is their, we call it farewell tour after almost sixty to seventy years in business. I can see if somehow we can try to get them back before they call it, they said it's their farewell tour, but they have been saying, we don't know when we're going to retire. They keep on saying we're going to retire this year, but now they're already booked up until two thousand twenty-six now. How can we like try to get some entertainment like Eric to come back to Havant Grace to boost us, um, for more people? Baltimore is out, you could say, out drawing us, but we don't care about Baltimore and them and stuff like that. So when do you think we can get some big-name stars in here? And I'm, I've got a question. Everybody getting reelected and I hope you guys reappoint my good friend Chris Ritchie back as the Director of Administration. And like I told you before, you got four, you got four years ago, you can probably run for mayor. And also I even told Councilman Ringsucker, he should probably run for mayor in four years, but I don't think nobody wants to run against you, Mayor, because then they'll have a chance.
Run in four years.
Thank you.
And I think maybe in twenty twenty-eight, you might see my name on a ballot for president. I, I can be put in the, we have it office right now.
Thank you, sir. We're under, uh, section six, uh, item six, comments from citizens. Again, does any other citizen wish to speak on agenda item or any other matter of city business? Any comments from the council? Okay. Mr. Smith, welcome back.
Kirk Smith at Segal Street, Havant Grace, Maryland, two one zero seven eight. All the signs got taken down. It was a good election. Low turnout. That's okay. You guys are back in. The invite, though, still stands. Just because the Secret Garden Tour is over doesn't mean you can't bring yourselves and your families to see what retired Sergeant Major ordered the retired chief to do. That goes to the chief and the administration, too. We got a lot of stuff going on. We've added, thanks to the garden mart, because we snuck in there Sunday. We actually have more plants that are natives for the back forty. And we've got a plan to make a modification after we get the next section of French drain in due to the stormwater stuff that you're all talking about, to make a Blast of Red berm garden spot. It'd just blow you away. So expect to have a, see me if you come over with some mud on me. Good, it's good mud, though. It's good dirt. And thank you for allowing another year of annual growth, especially in the plant area. You guys are doing great, especially you, Councilmember Boyer. Thank you. You do sit on the tree commission. Remember that. See ya.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other citizen wish to speak to the council? Okay. Any comments from the council members? Without any further comments from citizens or the council, we will move on to item number seven. Appointments this evening. We have no appointments. Item number eight, recognitions. We have no recognitions. Item number nine, proclamations. We have a good proclamation this evening and it's, uh, recognize Emergency Medical Services Week. Is anybody in the audience from the ambulance corps this evening? Actually, actually, this, this is actually really wonderful. And I'll tell you what, I would like to go down into the well with the Council President. Can we all come up together? So, ladies and gentlemen, it always falls on this night. And so this is a tradition in City Havant Grace. Before we adjourn the old council and spread the new ones in, we always recognize EMS Week. And the City Havant of Grace is lucky to have what we call five-nine, which is our resident ambulance corps. And normally, it's John Carrery, or Pete will be here to take us where we put. So this evening, it's really wonderful to see the men and women. So, and this is great. Thank you very much for being here and making a great showing. So tell us a little about EMS Week and the history and the background of it, Pete?
EMS Week is wonderful, proud time. This is actually the fiftieth year that has been celebrated for EMS Week. This is why we celebrate right here. You know, it's the wonderful, wonderful providers that we have within Havant of Grace. It's a matter of if you're, if you've only been here for a couple of months, or you've been here for thirty years, forty years, forty-five, okay.
Is Mark, is Mark the longest one right now?
At the moment.
Okay.
So, you know, this is why we're here. We care deeply about the City of Havant of Grace. These people are all volunteers. They go through quite a bit of training. Even just become a basic EMT, no one's real basic, it's still only miss two years sometimes. Paramedics, you know, three to four years of education. So they've done this all in their free time to make our city a better place and a safer place. So I just want to say at this wonderful time, thank you very much. We have, I think, close to forty years now in our history and then some because we've been other organizations within the organization. But, I mean, this is wonderful to see. We have, you know, a small amount of our people that are here and every one of them here out there running ambulants. And this, it's wonderful. It's a great blessing to have them here. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well said, Chief. I appreciate it. Mr. President, want to say any words?
Uh, just want to say thank you, you know, first to our members because it is EMS Week. It's our time to recognize the efforts and the sacrifice that they put into this organization. And we are here to serve the community of Havant of Grace. And I just want to extend our thanks and support from the mayor and the City Council. So thank you very much.
Absolutely, absolutely. Councilmember Boyer, liaison on public safety, any words?
I just want to first say thank you for being the types of people who choose to take your time away from your families to run towards an emergency, to help people who are in need. It, it takes this very special type of person, a person committed to public service, but also committed to their fellow man. And you're all very special for that. I know many, some of you are Havant of Grace residents. Others are people who just choose to volunteer for our city. And for that, we're very grateful. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyer. Council President, any words, sir?
I just, I want to thank you guys so much for continuing to do it. I, you know, I, I am where I am today because I was in the ambulance corps. I work partially in the medical field, work for Social Security, but because of my knowledge of medicine and what I learned through the ambulance corps, with the college credits I got because doing your EMT, you actually get college credits for it. And you firefighters the same way. It really helped me out in a time of my life when I needed purpose. And you guys just do wonderful things for the community. I took my EMT with Nazir. He can tell you how bad I drive. But I've been on a lot of scary ambulance calls with him, too. And, but I love the ambulance corps and I'm just so proud of what you guys do. So thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate it. I just have one question. You guys going to go out for like a bike date afterwards? Or you just going to go back to ambulance corps? You got training. Okay. Well, let me get this done real quick then. All right. I was figuring, you had the whole family here. We thought we could do something fun, but, okay. All right. I'm going to read this into the record real quick. Emergency Medical Services Week two thousand twenty-four. Remember our past, forging our future, fiftieth anniversary. City of Havant of Grace proclamation, whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those that need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness and injury. Whereas Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. Whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills. Whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, William T. Martin, along with the members of the Havant of Grace City Council proclaim the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, as Emergency Medical Services Week for the City of Havant of Grace. I present this to the President. Take that and maybe, I don't know, can we get a group picture here? Do I squeeze in? Okay, we're going to move on to number ten, presentations. This evening's presentation is actually a presentation by the Chair of our Election Board, Mr. Nick Galoro. And he will be reading the official election results into the record, which is appropriate since we're about to swear people in the office. So. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council, department heads, staff, guests present and remote. Yes, we had an election on May seventh, two thousand twenty-four. All the incumbents got reelected. So as a gentleman said earlier, congratulations. You're in. There were four hundred and fifty-nine ballots cast. Out of an electorate of twelve thousand two hundred and sixty-five, do the math, about three and a half percent. They read as follows, for mayor, total of three hundred and fifty-seven votes. They read as follows, for mayor, total of 357 votes. For the three council seats, for Casey Boyer, 374 votes. Jim Ring Socker, I don't know how to say your name correctly now, these elections helped me with this, 321. Tamlin Schnegas, 328. There were a number of write-ins, nothing to move the needle, but if people are interested, they are posted on a chamber doors and the mythical shadow box that's out there somewhere. So, thank you.
Nick, thank you. Nick, thank you very much and the members of your board for a long day last Tuesday.
Yeah, there are nine people, professional, dedicated. I meant to give them a shout out. Thanks for the line.
Well, not a problem, not a problem, but thank you all and for all the work you do. We appreciate it. Okay, now we move on to item 11, resolutions. This evening, we have no resolutions. Item 12, ordinances. This evening, we have two ordinances we'll be dealing with. Both are going to be second reading. And ordinance, item eight, ordinance 1150, Council President.
Mr. Mayor, council, citizens, I move to introduce ordinance number 1150 concerning amending chapter one, general provisions to add new article five definitions and rules of construction for second reading and adoption.
Council have a motion by the Council President, do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Robertson. This is a motion to introduce ordinance 1150 on second reading, questions or comments on the introduction of the ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion introduced, ordinance 1150 on second reading, carries six zero in affirmative. It's an ordinance by the Mayor of City Council of Havre Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article, the annotated code of Maryland, and sections 33 and sections 34 of the Havre Grace City Charter to amend City Code, Chapter One, general provisions, to add new article five definitions and rules of construction. Council to have a motion to adopt ordinance 1150 on second reading.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Schnegas. Questions or comments on 1150? Council President.
The purpose of this ordinance is just to clear up some confusion and to give exact definitions of terms and verbiage in our general provisions, chapter one. So, that's it.
Thank you, Council President. Any other questions or comments? Without any further comments, we'll do a roll call vote on ordinance 1150. Councilmember Booker.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Schnegas.
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero in the affirmative, city council, city ordinance 1150 concerning amending chapter one, general provisions to add new article five definitions and rules of construction is adopted on second reading. Item B, ordinance 1151, Councilmember Schnegas.
Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens. I move to introduce ordinance number 1151 concerning repealing and replacing chapter 31, building construction, in the second reading and adoption.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Schnegas, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Council President. This is a motion to introduce on second reading, ordinance 1151, 1151. Questions or comments on the introduction? On the introduction, yep.
On the introduction, actually. I had to think about that. This actually is a comment under the introduction. So I make a motion to suspend the rules to introduce this tonight, which wouldn't be our normal course of action because we have the public hearing this evening and normally we wait till the next meeting to have the vote, but I'm going to make a motion that we suspend the rules so we can introduce it tonight and vote on it tonight so we're on the same timeline as the county for this ordinance. So that is a motion under the motion to introduce. Is that correct? It's parliamentary procedure, I don't know, because we, can we technically introduce it?
It's a second reading anyway, right?
It's a second reading, but it wouldn't normally be tonight, it would be next meeting.
Oh, 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 wait a minute, yeah, okay, I see what you're saying, never mind, never mind, yeah, it was a public hearing. So yes, you're correct, on the, on the questions, comments, introduction, you could, well, you could do it that way or you could do it under the question after.
Which would you prefer, sir?
Traditionally, what we do is we'll go ahead and just vote on the introduce for second reading and I'll read a header back in and when it say motion to adopt is when you would make an amendment to amend, to suspend the rules and adopt.
That's fine. Then I would throw my motion.
Okay. So we're just going back to the regular motion of, motion by Councilmember Schnegas, seconded by the Council President. This is just a motion to introduce on second reading, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Okay, so the motion introduced, 1151, carries six zero in affirmative. So this is going to be ordinance 1151 concerning repeal and replacing chapter 31, building construction. An ordinance by the Mayor of City Council of Havre Grace, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article, the annotated code of Maryland, and sections 33 and 34 of the Havre Grace City Charter for the purpose of repeal and replacing Havre Grace City Code, Chapter 31, building construction. Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Motion by the Council President.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Schnegas, Council President. Question.
Mr. Mayor, council, I move to suspend the rules so we can vote tonight on item B, which is ordinance number 1151, because we read the, we had the public hearing tonight and the rules state that we would normally wait till the next meeting. I made the motion that we suspend the rules so we can be on the same timeline as a county.
Council have a motion by the Council President, seconded by Council, well, have a motion by Councilmember or Council President to suspend the rules and to adopt 1151 this evening. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Booker. This is the motion to suspend the rules to introduce 1151 this evening and adopt it this evening to suspend the rules, which would mean we went right from public hearing to an adoption. We're voting on that right now. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion to suspend the rules carries six zero in the affirmative. We are back under the question of adopting ordinance 1151. Questions or comments? Councilmember Schnegas.
Yes, the proposed amendments for ordinance 1151 on page nine, lines 293 through 395, 393, 395. The proposed amendment is to delete the section of screening of the dumpsters. That is to be deleted. And the other proposed amendment is to amend the wording on page 17, line 740 to 748. And what will be added is in that, as the fees apply, it is, applies under city code under chapter 70, fees in addition to the standard permit fee, as well as within 10 days, the documented notification to the property owner and, we're adding and/or, the contractor of record, so I'll be subject to any additional fines. In addition to that, if all building and trade inspections have not received final approval, the city may attach the violation record to the property tax record and will not issue a tax clearance certificate until all required permits and inspections have been approved and the violation file is closed.
Motion?
That is a motion.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, have a motion by Councilmember Schnegas, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Council President. Questions or comments on Councilmember Schnegas's motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Councilmember Schnegas's motion is adopted, six zero, any affirmative? Thank you. Any other further questions or comments? Council, without any further questions or comments, we're going to do a roll call vote on 1151. Councilmember Schnegas.
Yes.
Councilmember Booker.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer. By motion of six, by approval of six zero in the affirmative, city council ordinance 1151 is approved and adopted on second reading. Thank you, council. We're going to go to item 13, old business. This evening, we have no old business. Item 14, business from the mayor. I do have one item of business is I need a director of administration. And when Mr. Gambatoria quit on us, I'm joking now, when Mr. Gambatoria retired in early February, we approved the appointment of Mr. Ritchie to director of administration, but his contract was to continue, basically continue until the swearing-in of a new mayor and council, or tonight. So I have asked the Council President if it would, if he felt the need to go into closed session or not, but since the only term, the only thing about the contract that's different is that it's just a term. Instead of two months, it's now three years, correct? So the Council President said no need to go into closed session for that. So, go ahead, Council President, if you want to make a motion.
So, give me a second here. Mr. Mayor, citizens, council, I move to approve the reappointment of the Director of Administration. Dr. Chris Ritchie.
Council have a motion by Council President, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Booker. Questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed say nay. Motion to approve the reappointment of Director of Administration to a full-term contract carries six zero in the affirmative. And Dr. Ritchie, if you wouldn't mind joining me in the, well, no, swear in.[1330.08][1330.08][applause] Dr. Ritchie, I want to ask you please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I'm going to say the word aye, and when I say the word aye, please say the word aye, also repeat your name. Aye.
Aye, Christopher Ritchie.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill the requirement.
That I will fulfill the requirement.
Office I'm about to assume.
Of the office I'm about to assume.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I'll be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
Support the laws.
And support the laws.
Constitution thereof.
And Constitution thereof.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
As Director of Administration.
As Director of Administration.
City of Havre Grace.
For the city of Havre Grace.
My duty. I know we kind of unceremoniously just treated it just another agenda item, but I do want to let everyone know that Dr. Ritchie has been doing one heck of a job. I mean that, since you've, since he's taken over the spot and a lot of people don't notice. So, Dr. Ritchie was also our human resource manager before he became Director of Administration, but we had about a, almost a two-month lapse where we identified our next HR person, but that HR person couldn't take the job until April 8th. And so Chris had to do all of February and all of March, not only as a Director of Administration, but the HR person as well. So, you know, so thank you for doing both roles and you're able to do it and you hit the ground running, so you've been a great asset to the city, Chris, and thanks for everything. Looking forward to working with you for the next three years. Thank you. Okay, while we're, oh, what do you know, server. Okay.
Maybe a few more months in this job and that beard will be gray enough that you won't need to dye it again by Christmas time.
Funny thing, it happens right around October, it just starts changing.[1559.01][1559.01][laughter]
I didn't have gray hair until I took the office, so.
Yeah, believe it or not, he's our resident Santa Claus and it doesn't say, Chris Ritchie says Chris Kringle outside his door in the office, so it's like, we all, we all, we all love Chris, so definitely make the holidays nice around here, thank you. So this is the part of the evening where we actually, we're going to make a motion to adjourn CNA DA, which means to kill the legislative session, it's over. So this is it. Do we have a motion to adjourn CNA DA and end the 2023-2021 session?
So moved.
Seconded by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Schnegas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Six zero in the affirmative, approves the motion to adjourn CNA DA. Legislative session 2023-2024 is officially over, officially over. We will now swear in the mayor and three council members for the next term. Thank you very much.
I do want to note that as a Marylander, I say signy die.
Sign die.
Signy die, yeah.
That's how we used to say it. It makes more sense.
It is actually technically CNA DA, but Marylanders say signy die.
Starting Latin class on.
I know.[1645.33][1645.33][laughter]
Can't help but, yeah, Steve the Thema.
Ask April, she's Catholic.
I like sign die.
Signy die, yeah.
I listen to Google how those are pronounced.
No last word is one soul. That's true. Nobody knows, different pope.
Google does. Go to pronunciation.
That way we can't read all those records in the Vatican. Martin family, please show us in the well.
You want to do it, sir?
I don't know. I'm good. I'll say, any camera help this room? Anybody? Okay.
We'll push up. Very sure. All right, ready? Face service. Thank you. All right, are you ready? Say your name. Aye.
Aye, William Thomas, Navy, Martin's in.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill the requirement.
That I will fulfill the requirement.
Of the office.
The office.
I am about to assume.
About to assume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I'll be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
Laws thereof.
And I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Without fear of. Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Not fear of favor or prejudice.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
As mayor of the city of Haverty Grace.
As mayor of the city of Haverty Grace.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Congratulations, John. All right, next up, we have Casey Boyer. Okay. Say aye, and then you say your name. Aye.
Aye, Cassandra Boyer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill the requirement.
That I will fulfill the requirement.
Of the office I'm about to assume.
The office I'm about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
The state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
As a council member for the city of Haverty Grace.
As a council member of the city of Haverty Grace.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. All right, I'm next. Everybody ready? Say aye and say nay.
Aye, James Andrew Rick Tucker Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill.
That I will fulfill.
The requirement of the office.
The requirement of the office.
I'm about to assume. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
The state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
Laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
As a council member for the city of Haverty Grace.
As a council member for the city of Haverty Grace.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The date is eight twenty-seven, and the date is May twentieth. Now sit as a brand-new council for the two thousand twenty-four, thousand twenty-five legislative session. I will call the roll.
Mike and Boog.
I will call the roll. Councilmember Ringzacher.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Oh, he's in the bathroom, but he is here.
Oh, he's in the bathroom, okay. He's with us in spirit. Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Boyer.
Here.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Here.
Councilmember Boger.
Here.
Okay. We have, uh... Councilmember Robertson will join us shortly, but what we need to do before we do any other matter of business is, um... We need to go into a closed session to select a council president. What I'll do on that is I'll hand that off to Councilmember Ringzacher to make the motion.
Mr. Mayor, Council, citizens all. Under the Open Meetings Act, general provision, Article three dash three zero five, I move to go into closed session upon adjournment of the open session on Monday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, to consider the following matter. Number one, election of the city council president pursuant to City Charter, Section twenty-four. This meeting will be closed under general provisions, Article, Section three dash three zero five B subsection one, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this body... This public body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. The reason for closing this meeting is that the discussions surrounding the selection and appointment of the council president and the appointment competencies of personnel are sensitive and potentially embarrassing to those being considered for appointment and are entitled to confidentiality. The city council will reconvene open session after the closed session, and votes will be recorded in public. And that is my motion, sir.
Second.
Counsel's motion by Councilmember Ringzacher, second by Councilmember Shenegas. Motion to move in a closed session to select a council president. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to move in a closed session carries five, zero, and affirmative. Okay. With the motion moving to close session, and it's been regularly approved, we will reconvene under item, uh... When you guys come back, under item twenty. Castle dismissed.
Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. We are reconvening the May twentieth, two thousand twenty four council meeting. The council has returned from, um, from their closed session for a selection of council president. But before we make the motion for council president, we'll call the roll one more time. Councilmember Ringsucker.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson. Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Boyer.
Here.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Here.
Councilmember Boger.
Here.
All council members are present. We're gonna go to item twenty-two. Uh, oh, by the way, I didn't mark the time. The time is nine forty-eight, just for the record that we reconvene. Nine forty-eight. Okay. Item twenty-two, motion for the selection of council president.
Microphone.
Sorry. It's getting a little late here and it's a Monday. Uh, I move to, uh, appoint Jimmy Ringsucker council president for this legislative session.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Boger. This is for the nomination of council member Ringsucker to be council president. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion to appoint councilmember Ringsucker to be the city council president for the city of Haverty Grace for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five legislation session. Uh, is approved. Six-zero in the affirmative. Council president, any words?
Uh, just, uh, thank you to, uh, my fellow council members for having the faith in me. Um, you gave me advice last year on how I can improve and I, I hope that I did, uh, everything to your liking and, uh, I'll continue to move on and, uh, my phone is always on. Uh, emails are always open. Um, just reach out to me if you need anything and if I can make anything happen, um, you know, that, uh, it's not going on right now, that, uh, any shortcomings I might have to, to hopefully, uh, uh, continue to hold on to your, uh, uh, to your approval. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, council president, and congratulations.
Thank you.
For the work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get applause, yeah.
Excellent. We will go on to item twenty-three, uh, this evening, new business. We have a few things on the, uh, we have four things on the new business docket. And I'll hand it off to Dr. Chris Ritchie.
Thank you, mayor, council. Uh, so for your consideration, we have four special events. The Bayside Family Wellness Fair, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, from eleven a.m. to two p.m. at Concord Point Park. The Children's Art Festival on September seventh, from eleven a.m. to three p.m. at Tidings Memorial Park. The sixty-first Annual Haverty Grace Art Show, October nineteenth and twentieth, at ten, from ten a.m. to five p.m. at Tidings Memorial Park and Concord Point Park. And then the Seventh Annual Craft Beer and Wine Festival on May tenth, two thousand twenty-five. And that runs from eleven a.m. to five p.m. at the Lockhouse Museum Grounds and Canestio Street.
Okay. Council president would like to do this as a consent.
Uh, I would. I do have one comment, though, under the, uh, when you asked a question, or one question under your questions.
Sure.
Go ahead. Uh, well, I'll go ahead and ask it now. Uh, did we receive confirmation that, uh, for the beer and wine festival, that they will not be closing down Canestio Street overnight?
That is what I was told this morning.
Okay, thank you. Then I have no objection to having a consent calendar for the entire thing.
No other objections to consent count, or is you want to pull it out?
Um, I didn't understand your question. So, we, we wanted to make sure that Canestio Street was not shut down overnight.
Oh, gotcha.
And that, that would be that Friday leading into that Saturday.
Understood. I just didn't, I didn't hear him. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is for the approval of the special events, item one, two, three, and four. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Special events, uh, carry six-zero in the affirmative. Very well, council, thank you. We're gonna go to item twenty-four, director's report. Right back to Dr. Ritchie.
Thank you, mayor, council, citizens at home. Uh, so first, congratulations, uh, Mayor Martin, council president Ringsucker, council member Boyer, and council member Shenegas. Congratulations on your reelection. Uh, looking forward to working with you for another term. Uh, I would like to publicly thank Nick Galero and the Haverty Grace Election Board, uh, for their effort, efforts in running the election. Um, they put in a whole lot of time to make that, uh, be a successful time for the city and, uh, just thank you very much for everything that you did. Also, I want to thank the Hartford County Board of Elections. Uh, they have been an invaluable resource to the city. Um, not just for this election, but for every election that we have. They're there, they're training judges and they're allowing us to use their equipment. So, I'm very appreciative of that. Uh, I did wanna offer some congratulations to the Haverty Grace Arts Collective, who received a grant to restore the Under the Chesapeake mural on the Hayden Bridge. The one that's at the bottom of one fifty-five when you come into the city. Um, and then they did also, uh, ask that I announce that they are hosting, the Haverty Grace Arts Collective is hosting the Blooms of Hope Art Auction and Fundraiser on Thursday, May thirtieth, from six p.m. to nine p.m. at Gallery Two Twenty. Uh, local artists will be showcasing their inclusive sunflower art, with proceeds benefiting Leila's Gift, a local nonprofit that advocates for, supports, and celebrates children with special needs and disabilities. And then I do want to promote, uh, since summertime is right around the corner, we have several youth summer camps at the Star Center, which are filling up extremely fast. Uh, so there's several that are currently sold out, but the ones that are not sold out are Star Artists Barbie World Camp, Decades of Disney, Lights, Camera, Action Filming Camp, Pinkalicious Camp, Basketball Camp, Princess Dance Camp, Ken's Mojo Dojo Casa House Camp, Broadway Jazz Camp, Aerial Arts Camp, Freestyle Fairy Tales, Survivor and STEM Camp, and Makers Camp, Reduce, Reuse, Recycle, Make It. Uh, so you can go to the Star Center's website, uh, to go and sign up for any of those camps that you may be interested in sending your children to. And then lastly, I just want to offer a heartfelt thank you to the mayor and city council for my appointment. I, I appreciate it greatly. Uh, working at the city of Haverty Grace is one of the best decisions I've ever made and it continues to be that. And thank you all for your support. And that concludes my comments for the evening.
Thank you very much, Chris. Thank you. Mr. Borsay could not be here this evening. Uh, he's director of planning. A little under the weather. We hope he feels better. And, uh, so we're gonna go to Ms. Bridget Johnson, Director of Economic Development Tourism. Good evening, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, mayor, council, and citizens at home. My comments will be brief tonight, um, but first I would like to start off with a sincere congratulations to you and the council members on your reelection. I look forward to continuing, uh, working with you and working here at the city of Haverty Grace. Congratulations to Dr. Chris Ritchie on his appointment to Director of Administration, and I look forward to continuing working with you as well. My two comments this evening is the Economic Development Advisory Board will not meet during the month of June and July. We gave them a little break, which we are allowed to do via the charter, um, and we will meet again starting in August. And secondly, um, the construction began this morning on the two-hundred block of Washington Street. Hopefully, everyone saw it. Um, I don't know how you missed it. Um, we, uh, the Visitor Center and Main Street office is, um, working, uh, directly with Patrick Seipolt to keep the downtown businesses and the residents, um, up to date on what's going on. So, we are sending out email blasts. Um, we're speaking to people on the phone and we're really trying to up our communication, so no one is taken by surprise with all of the work that is going on in the downtown. So, if there's anyone in here tonight or listening that is not on the email list, that would like to be on the email list, please contact the Visitor Center, four-one-zero, nine-three-nine, twenty-one-hundred. Ask for Pam Sickenberger. Ask for Pam Sickenberger and she will, uh, get your information and add you to our contact list. And as well, please continue to follow us on the City of Haverty Grace Facebook page, the City of Haverty Grace Economic Development Facebook page and Instagram, Explore Haverty Grace Facebook page and Instagram, and Explore Haverty Grace Maryland or M D dot com. We are using all of these avenues to keep everyone, excuse me, to keep everyone up to date. Um, so again, um, all of this information is readily available at the Visitor Center. Um, if there are no questions, that concludes my report for this evening.
Any questions for Ms. Johnson? Thank you, Bridget. Appreciate the update. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. DeHordy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Uh, like my colleagues, I congratulate all of you on your reelections and reappointments and, uh, it, it is surely an indication of the confidence that the citizens have in the work that you're doing. Uh, now for the, uh, financial conditions report for, since my last report, the general fund, we collected just under two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in revenues, mostly highway user fees and event proceeds, and we spent a little over eight hundred thousand, uh, since my last report, so the, the fund balance has gone down a little over five hundred and fifty thousand. It stands at two million five hun, just under two million five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, and again, these are pretty, these are going on pretty much as we expected by the budget. The Water and Sewer Fund, since my last report, collected just under sixty thousand dollars, primarily capital cost recovery fees, so that's a good sign. Um, and we spent a little over a million. We got some capital projects going, most notably, those of you who drive down Juniata and turn left at Superior Street, you'll know the, the, uh, construction that I am talking about with all those water lines. Um, so we spent a little over a million dollars. The fund went down just under nine hundred and fifty thousand, but sits at four, four-point-one-two-five million dollars, so we're, we're in, still in very strong shape and this is all anticipated. Uh, the Marina Fund, since my last report, we, um, had a just under four thousand dollars worth of slip and ramp fees, and we spent a little under thirty thousand, mostly for fuel, twenty thousand of it was for fuel. So, the fund declined about twenty-five thousand dollars, but sits at eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So, all of them with basically about a month and a half to go are sitting pretty much where we thought they would be and where we projected in the budget. And that's my report for this evening, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hordy. Is there any questions for George? Sir, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
And good evening, Mr. Conway. Thanks for, uh, filling in for EJ. How are you doing, sir?
I'm doing well. Thank you very much. Uh, just a, just a quick comment to elaborate on what Bridget said about the, uh, you know, we finally have some, you know, visible site of the downtown restoration project moving forward. So, our contractors involved with the one-hundred, two-hundred block of North Washington, um, to replace about a hundred and thirty-seven linear feet of, of some kind of bad sewer. I think they got a couple sticks in today. It'll, it'll carry on through this week, probably in the next week, and then we'll have another contractor come in the following week to do the actual lining, so, and that, that process will take about another week or so, give or take. And Patrick and I are working on, for them to do most of the lining work on Monday and Tuesday, as to try to keep the impact, you know, as, as minimal as possible, and congrats to everyone for their reelection. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Appreciate it. Thank you for the update and good evening, chief.
Good.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Can, I have seen recently a large amount of people, uh, not people, we have had contractors coming into the city, working on the trees. Can you just explain what's happening with the trees?
Uh, yeah, it's just some, some tree trimming work on, uh, most, most of this round is on South Washington Street. We'll, we'll do one removal, it'll probably be tomorrow or Wednesday. It's a, it's a large oak kinda upper where Dr. Fritz's office used to be on the, uh, on the west side. Uh, it's dead, so it has come down. Um, they should be finished end of this week and they're doing some, doing some work in Tidings Park also, mainly over towards where the pickleball court is, um, removing some dead wood and elevating the trees there, so, you know, it opens up the view more.
And if people have concerns in regards to the trees in their, um, neighborhoods, um, do they, who do they contact?
Contact me. Yep, contact me.
Thank you.
Here's our questions for Mr. Conway. Thank you, Joe. Good evening, chief.
Good evening, mayor and council. Congratulations once again. Uh, looking forward to working with you and Dr. Ritchie, also congratulations to you as well. And I think the gray hair has already started. I'm not really sure, but. So, no, um, with the downtown revitalization, I just want to remind people, whether it's the revitalization or during any special events, please pay attention to any signage, barricades, cones, anything like that. Um, we don't want anybody hurt, so don't move anything, but please, um, make sure that you do pay attention to whatever the instructions might be or the directions might be given, uh, either through the barricades or cones or by a police officer. That's very, very important, especially when we're getting into the special event season. So, um, the other thing that I wanted to mention is that the mobile, uh, security unit that you all, uh, voted on and, and supported, uh, actually while we were sitting here earlier, uh, got in, an email from the company and it should be arriving here within a week or two. So, I'm really excited about that. So, we should have that set up, ready to go. We'll put it in the downtown area, especially for the construction. So, that's a really, really good thing. And finally, just as a reminder, on Monday, May the twenty-seventh, is Memorial Day and we always have our service down at Tidings Park at eleven o'clock, so please, everybody, if you get an opportunity, come down and join us. It's an amazing event, it truly, truly is, and the American Legion puts it on and they always do a wonderful job. So, that would be it, mayor.
Thank you, chief. I appreciate the update. Any questions for Chief Walter? Thank you. Appreciate it. We're on moved, uh, finished with the director reports and we're gonna move to business from the mayor. And, uh, well, you know, normally when there's nobody in the audience like this, I'll say no comment, but I got stuff to say tonight, just real briefly. First, I wanna congratulate Chris Ritchie again. Uh, I'll tell you, I meant what I said earlier. Uh, you, you really, uh, you played two hats for two months. You were the, you, you still were the human resource dude and the, uh, director administration guy, and you did a great job. I mean, talk about, you know, baptism under fire and you did a wonderful job and I, I, like I say, I couldn't be happier working with you and I want all the citizens to know that, um, things are going great. You know, the team's working out really good. I, I love my team up here. They've all been handpicked, uh, because they are the best at what they do, they're the right people for the job, and they care about Haverty Grace, which is most important. Everyone that works in this building is very emblematic of the character of the city and, and that's what makes me proud to come to work every day. So, again, thank you, Chris, and thank all my directors. I look forward to working with you, uh, for the next three years and getting a lot of great things done for the citizens. Speaking of years, I was just thinking to myself, I'm a numbers guy. Most people don't believe that, 'cause I suck at math, but I really am a numbers guy and, um, even though I had to take algebra four times in high school. But I was thinking to myself, so I've spent, I'm just completed, tonight I completed my sixteenth year of public service at the city of Haverty Grace. And seven on council and nine as mayor. So, I have served the citizens in an elected capacity for five thousand eight hundred and forty days. A total of three hundred and eighty-four council meetings as of tonight. Hundred and sixty-eight of those meetings was as a legislator and two hundred and sixteen was as the mayor. And as of tonight, I have one thousand ninety-two days left in my term. And I know I keep saying these numbers a lot, but it was one thousand thirty-five days ago that I walked in my office and I called a staff meeting and I said, I know what we need, I know what we need to do with that ARPA money. I said, I, I know what's gonna make this town stand out more than any other city on the East Coast United States, and that's where we laid out the plan. And privately to my staff, they know it's Plan Ten Thirty-five. They say, why Ten Thirty-five? I said, 'cause there's one thousand thirty-five days left in this term. And that's when I want to get it done, because there's no guarantees of, you know, maybe the egg always ain't gonna run again or that I would even be elected again. So, to me, it was about getting this done in this term. So, I always look at my, I have a countdown on my clock. It tells me how much time to the minute and second I have left on my term, because I don't let any day go by wasted. Every day is an honor and a privilege to serve the citizens of Haverty Grace. So, everything to me is, on what day did I do that? What day left on my term did, did we make this happen? And it's just fortuitous that today, we broke ground in Washington Street on the two-hundred block to start taking out the oldest infrastructure in the city. Some of the oldest pipes, oldest laterals, oldest sewer lines started today. And I can't be, one thing I'm really proud is the, the zeal in which my staff attacked this project. What makes me even more proud, very proud, is the support that council bought into this project. And that, I want to thank everybody for standing behind this, because, you know, we do a lot of things that are home runs, some things are controversial. This has been controversial to a point. You know, some, some people, some people see the vision and they're like, you know what? This is, this is freaking awesome. This is what we want for the city. Some people might not like it, which is their right as an American. Some people may have heard about it too late and maybe whatever, but we tried our best to bring everybody in in the city with the, with the shirts and the, and the public input sessions. Uh, and I, I feel in my heart, what we're doing on this big project is emblematic of, of what the general desire of the citizens are. And, you know, I believe in our elections, you know? Just because our elections were uncontested doesn't mean that people don't care. You know, I think people in general think that this building and this government and this legislative body has the best interests of citizens in heart. If you wanna talk about, you know, if you ever question that kids, people don't care, look across the river. One mile across the river, they've gone through three, like, three mayors and three elections. They're paying attention. They just haven't found that sweet spot yet, where they feel like, for whatever reasons, I mean, where they feel like they're confident in their government. And so, we've worked really hard over the years and I've seen, I've served a lot of different council members in my three hundred and eighty-four council meetings. I've only missed two, wasn't it? Missed one, had COVID. I wasn't allowed in here. If I was allowed in here with COVID, I would've been here, but anyway. But I had a pretty good attendance record and, um, I've served a lot of people, I've been honored to serve with people, and I'll tell you what, this council I work with right now up here has been the best council I've ever served with. And I, I mean that. I mean, they're all, they're all good Haverty Grace people. I want everyone at home to know that, that the people that are up here, that you put up here on this dais, they care about the city more than anything else and the future of it as well. And so, I'm energized more than ever for these last one thousand ninety-two days that I have the honor and privilege to hold this seat, to hold this office, and to continue serving. The passion and energy I have in my heart is still unmatched, as it was the first day I ever sat in a seat where council members, Shenegas is sitting, which is when I took the dais. I remember I was so nervous when I got up here. My mouth kept getting dry, I couldn't drink enough water. I was like really nervous, I'm thinking, what the heck am I doing up here as a council member in two thousand eight? But I tell you what, um, it's been an honor and a privilege, and I want to thank my wife, I want to thank my children. I'll leave it at that. Thank you. We're gonna go to, um, Councilmember Boger.
Thank you, Mayor Martin, uh, council, director, citizens at, at home. Just, uh, I'll, I'll keep it brief. Uh, once again, Dr. Ritchie, congratulations. Uh, it fills my heart knowing that you're in that seat right there and that you, you're very responsive already. You're already doing the job, you've been doing the job for, for quite a while now. It's good to see that it's, it's official, so, congrats to you, uh, council, mayor, congratulations. Uh, and so I, I'll keep it kinda short. I'll first start by saying I want to thank the, the ambulance corps for keeping us safe, the EMS, our fantastic police department, and our Susquehanna Host Company for keeping us safe. Mayor Martin, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Boger. Good evening, Councilmember Jones.
Good evening, um, mayor, council, folks in the audience and at home. Um, I wanted to congratulate each of you tonight, um, on your wins and looking forward to working with you for another three years. Um, I also want to congratulate all of the Oracle, um, graduates from Haverty Grace High School today. Uh, council member, um, um, Boyer and I were there to, um, congratulate them as they all got their sashes and, you know, well wishes from their parents, so I just want to say congratulations to all of you. And that's it for me, mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jones. Good evening, Councilmember Boyer.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, overall, on the theme of, of, I want to thank everybody who, um, came out to vote and all the, um, people who worked for the election board to, to sit there and, and make sure that the process, um, was efficient and, um, and in keeping with all the rules and regs, um, that were, um, that they had to follow. I know that it was kinda complicated, because it was also the primaries, um, elections and I, I think they got the, the better pieces of equipment, most likely, so it was a little precarious here and there, so I know it was a little bit more stressful than they had planned for, but I really want to thank them. I also want to thank Tammy Brinkton for that day, going the extra mile, making sure that they were, that the election, um, people were taken care of. She did an excellent job and should be, get kudos for doing that. Um, I, I want to thank, um, Jimmy and Tammy for a, a great election cycle and the mayor, congratulations. Um, we do, really do have a group of extremely committed people here and, um, that is, um, a group of people who really want to identify the, the best for our community without, I don't know, taking people out and doing it. It, it's having the right point of view is what I think is very important. Chris, I've known you longer than you think I've known you, because I've known your father. So, I, it's kind of weird how the life circles around you, you get to see people that come in your life time and time again, but you are the best attribute of your father and then some, even more of your mom, but, um, best attribute, attribute. I was, I attended the Patriot Programs with Councilman, um, Boger. We did, um, oh, Jason was there, but he was in the back as the, he was a proud dad, as his son Colt was one of the Super Patriots. Is that what they were called, the Super Patriots? Um, who all through elementary school plus, did you do pre-K as well as a Patriot program? What?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten through fifth grade? Okay. Um, so what we did, um, at Haverty Grace Elementary, we were stamping a lot of papers, but one of the other things we got to do, and this is on behalf of the green team, is we had this little sheet for the kids to poll, or to take a poll on what bird they would like to represent our city, and it was a, a ringer that day for the American eagle and it, mainly because the eagle flew above, um, during the ceremony, but it was Patriot Program. You know, the swift had absolutely no chance or the kingfisher, that was just not gonna happen. Um, and in regards to the green team, we are going to be dedicating, um, officially opening the Pollinator Garden next weekend, and thank you, mayor, for being a part of that. And finally, to, um, the EMS folks, I want to wish you a wonderful congratulations on another year served and thank you very much for everything that you do for our community, the time that you put in, not only for, um, responding to calls, but all the time that you put in for training. It is a, a large commitment and we're very appreciative as a community for your time served. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Boyer. Councilmember Shenegas, good evening.
Good evening, mayor, council, administration, citizens at home and in the audience. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming out and casting your votes at the polls. Though we had a low turnout, those that did come out, came out and exercised their citizen rights to vote, and I hope that that serves as an example to those of you that were happy for us and, you know, we stood uncontested, however, citizens coming out and letting us know they voted for us and those citizens that said, well, you know, you already won, but you have my vote anyway, thank you. And I appreciate that, um, I'm on a council that is solid. I appreciate being able to, um, work again with my mayor and my fellow council members. Congratulations on your reelection and those of you that support us on the other side of the dais, your turn will be next. So, uh, citizens, again, thank you, looking forward to serving you for another two years. And, um, I want to say thank you to Chris Ritchie and Adam. Thank you so much for being a, a special part of making sure that we, as the council, um, are filled in on what we need to do to, um, help our citizens. And Ms. April, thank you, always being there to double check to make sure we're doing the right thing. Congratulations, Chris Ritchie. I, um, Congratulations, Chris Ritchie. I know that your next three years are going to be eventful, and looking forward to working with you. Randy Taylor, thank you for stepping in tonight on behalf of my family and holding up my Bible. I appreciate that, and it was an honor to have you standing there with me. I look forward to summer coming in, and I look forward to having everyone come to the Friday's concerts in the park. Please come out this seventh, there will be a band. Also, it will be First Fridays, so you might have to choose and decide. But if you can't, please take a ride on the trolley and get yourself to both places. Thank you, Trolley ambassadors, for coming out in full force and being ready to serve our citizens. And that is all I have to say. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Shinagus. And good evening, Councilmember Robertson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I have no comments.
Okay. Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. And good evening, Council President Ringsucker.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'll keep it real short. Not much going on in the lay sports. The, the girls softball team was eliminated, unfortunately. So no state champions from them for the high school this year, but the, the Little League kids are still in contention. So, got our fingers crossed. I want to thank everybody again for coming out on Election Day. Those, the true diehards actually did come out. It was great seeing everybody. You know, I, I feel very humbled in, in being reelected. I think that it's interesting, two elections in a row running uncontested. It just makes me feel like maybe people like what we're doing. So, thank you to my fellow council members for, again, having faith in me. I do ask everybody out there to keep a little kid, I won't say his name, but it's the council, the county council president's grandson, he was hurt recently, and I just keep him in your prayers, just for his fast recovery. And with that, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much, Council President. We're gonna go to item number twenty-seven, adjournment. So, do I motion to adjourn?
Second.
Whoa, 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 everyone, slow down. Let's do that one, one more time. Okay. What, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have motion by Councilmember Boyer, second by Councilmember Shinagus. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to adjourn, carry six, zero, and affirmative. The time is now ten nineteen, and I wish everybody a good, happy weekend, a great Memorial Day weekend. Thank you so much, everybody. Good night.